We will now call a common council meeting of July 21st, 2020 to order. Roll call, please.
Alderman Kerkowski is excused. Alderman Lorick?
Here.
Alderman Duknia?
Here.
Thoman is excused. Alderman Gale?
Here.
Alderman Guzekowski?
Krista, would you please read the notice of the virtual meeting in, the video meeting?
The City of Oak Creek is authorized to hold this public meeting remotely during the COVID-19 public health emergency. This meeting being conducted via Zoom video conference with telephone conferencing capabilities was duly noticed per the City of Oak Creek Municipal Code and statutory notice requirements more than 24 hours in advance of the meeting. Members of the public have been advised of the options for participation via direct mailing to property owners. This meeting may also be viewed at the city's YouTube page, the link for which was contained in all aforementioned notice methods. The meeting recording will also be accessible on the city's YouTube page within 48 hours. When unmuted, all participants must state their name and address for the record, then proceed with the comments or questions. Questions and comments may also be entered into the Q&amp;A function within the Zoom webinar control panel. Staff and/or the moderator will monitor this function during the meeting and provide the information requested. There is one or more public hearing schedules as part of this meeting. After the mayor announces the public hearing, staff will read the public hearing notice into the record, state that the hearing is open and subject to the meeting procedure above, and provide a brief overview of the proposal. The chair will then proceed with the hearing by making calls for public comment. Following the third call for public comment, the chair will close the public hearing and proceed to consideration of the remaining agenda items.
Thank you, Krista. Would everybody please rise for pledge of allegiance? Deputy Clerk Mueller, would you read it into the record?
Pledge of allegiance.
I need to start us off. Okay, let's start again.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If everybody take a look at the minutes of July 7th, 2020. You're satisfied it's all in order, we'll entertain a motion.
I'll move to approve minutes of 7:07, 2020.
Guzekowski, your second. Roll call.
Alderman Lorick?
Aye.
Duknia?
Aye.
Gale?
Aye.
Guzekowski?
Aye.
And item four is a resolution, an appreciation of Stephen Gallagher, a retiring patrol officer. Krista, would you please read that?
Sure. Resolution of appreciation to Stephen M. Gallagher. Whereas Stephen M. Gallagher began his employment with the City of Oak Creek on January 4th, 1993, as a full-time police officer, and whereas during his 27 years and seven months of service, Stephen M. Gallagher has been an integral part of the Police Department while serving as a patrol officer, and whereas Stephen M. Gallagher has had history of service while also serving in the United States Army and Army Reserve, where he retired at the rank of major after 26 years of service. Stephen M. Gallagher had four overseas deployments while serving the United States, with two being why he worked for the City of Oak Creek. Stephen M. Gallagher received several awards and recognition while serving in the military, and whereas Stephen M. Gallagher has continued to serve the citizens of Oak Creek with honor and professionalism, and whereas Stephen M. Gallagher has served as a member of the Emergency Response Unit, Honor Guard Unit, Drug Enforcement Unit, Evidence Technician Unit, Field Training Officer, and was a certified accident investigator and reconstructionist in addition to his normal duties throughout his career. And whereas Stephen M. Gallagher has been a valuable employee during his years of dedicated service with the Oak Creek Police Department, always striving to enhance the quality of life for all citizens of the city, and has been well-known for his work ethic and his dedication to the department. And whereas Stephen M. Gallagher received four shift acknowledgements, four notorious arrest awards, three unit citations, one award of excellence, one letter of commendation, and five letters of appreciation. And whereas Stephen M. Gallagher is retiring from the Oak Creek Police Department after completing 27 years and seven months of full-time service to the City of Oak Creek. Now therefore, be it resolved by the mayor and the common council of the City of Oak Creek, for and on behalf of the citizens of the City of Oak Creek, that sincere gratitude and appreciation be extended to Stephen M. Gallagher for his years of professional, dedicated, and faithful service to the City of Oak Creek and the Police Department, and that the best wishes for good health and happiness be extended to Stephen M. Gallagher and his family for future years. Be it further resolved that this resolution be spread upon the minutes of this meeting, and that the city clerk is hereby directed to transmit a suitable copy thereof to Stephen M. Gallagher. Passed and adopted the 21st day of July.
Thank you, Krista. Chief Anderson, would you like to say a few words on Stephen's behalf? I think you're muted.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, with his service, he's not only served our country, he served our community almost the same amount of time. Steve is, his years of service with Oak Creek, if we counted all of the extra time he made himself available, holding over on shifts, coming in on special assignments and being there, he's going to be missed. 27 years of experience is not, it takes a while to recover and replace that, and we just wish him the best of luck.
Thank you, chief. Does anybody have any other words? Greg, I know you're out there. If you do, just go right ahead. If not. Again, on behalf of the entire council and the City of Oak Creek, I'd like to wish Officer Gallagher a long, happy retirement. As the chief said, not only did he serve the citizens of Oak Creek, he served the citizens of our country. He was on the front lines protecting us, not only in the streets of Oak Creek, but throughout the world. It's really quite amazing that he did that almost on equal time, so best wishes and a long, happy, well-earned retirement to Officer Gallagher. Motion, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, we'll move to approve resolution 12170-072120. The resolution of appreciation to Stephen M. Gallagher, retiring patrol officer.
Guzekowski, your second. Roll call.
Alderman Duknia?
Aye.
Gale?
Aye.
Guzekowski?
Aye.
Lorick?
Aye.
Item five is a public hearing, and it is consideration of a request for a conditional use permit for a freight yard, terminal, trans-ship depot on the facility is located at 102 West Oakview Parkway. Krista, would you like to read that in?
Sure. Public hearing number one is to consider a request submitted by Eric Ogden, Oak Creek Industrial LLC, for a conditional use permit for freight yard, freight terminal, trans-shipment depot facilities on the property located at 102 West Oakview Parkway. The applicant is Eric Ogden at Oak Creek Industrial LLC. The property owner is Oak Creek Industrial LLC. There follows the legal description and the date of notice is June 25th, 2020.
Thank you, Krista. And Doug, I know you're out there virtual.
I am. Thank you and good evening, everybody. My name is Doug Seymour. I'm the Director of Community Development for the City of Oak Creek, and this is the first of two public hearings this evening. This is on a conditional use permit that's requested for a freight yard, freight terminal, or trans-shipment depot facility for the property at 102 West Parkway. So just typically, although certainly trucks are a big part of any industrial property, when the level of activity rides to that of like a freight terminal or something of that nature, the city has, the city zoning code requires a conditional use permit for that. And this building, this multi-tenant building, which was approved by the Plan Commission in December of 2016 and is currently constructed, although there is no tenant that is announced for that building that would require that, they do have a pending deal that for a firm that would take a portion of that, the owners of the property wanted to have that conditional use permit in place so that they can be flexible when it comes to leasing up that facility. The approved plans for that, and I'll show you that in a moment, and I hope everyone can see my screen. If you can't, let me know. Again, this is the approved building, it's already completed, it's already up and running. It does show 28 loading decks on the west side, not all of which are initially constructed, but there is potential for that. It also allows for nine strip parking stalls for trailers on the northwest side of the property, as well as 20 striped stalls for trailers on the west end of the property. Outdoor storage on this property would be limited, the parking of trucks and trailers on those stalls that I just mentioned. The Plan Commission did review this request at the meeting, it's June 23rd, July 14th. The requests were recommended for approval, subject to the conditions and restrictions, which I made part of your packet, kind of the summary of which you can see right here. With that, I will note that this is a public hearing, a little bit different tonight. Anyone who has any questions or comments can participate in the public hearing in two ways. Those of you who are present physically at the county council meeting may submit your name and your appearance form to the city clerk, and once called, you can present your questions to come to the county council. For those of you who are attending virtually, you can indicate your presence by raising your hand virtually with the moderator, and he will then put you through to become part of the public hearing. The mayor will call three times for the public hearing. At this point, the public hearing is now open.
Thank you, Doug. This will be the first call. Anybody wishing to speak? Kevin, do we have anybody virtually that would like to weigh in on it?
Grant Spott, should I answer any questions?
Oh, thank you. The owner rep, correct? Yep. So they, just to be clear to the council and to the public, the owner rep is available for questions if needed. Third and final call. Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and move on to item six, which is consideration of that conditional use permit. I will turn it over to council. Does council have any questions or comments concerning the conditional use? Ken?
And you guys from planning committee can sit a little late, and Doug as well. The site plan allows them to store, I forgot how many you mentioned, 12 or 24?
29, actually.
29 on that west side, Doug?
Yep. I'm sorry, 28.
28.
No, 29, I was right.
Neither here nor there. Currently, there is no screening. I know one of the buildings, the first Dickman Building on the west side of the, of the west side of Oakview has a vertical screening wall for their truck storage. And I know we haven't officially approved this yet, but I know there are trailers being stored there already on those particular slots, and they appear to be train cargo carrier type, relatively unsightly, relatively rusty, relatively not a good look coming into our business park unscreened. I'd really look to have something addressed on that standpoint. If we're going to continue to see a bevy of container trailers parked there that are going to look like that, I prefer to have some screening employed there, especially given the fact that we're, you know, potentially going to have a neighbor there at some point. It is, it is something you're going to see for everyone who comes into that entrance into business parks. So that is one thing I would give serious consideration to on that.
Yeah, I think.
Given if in fact what's parked there right now is indicative of what's going to be parked there in the future, so.
Is the understanding that they were actually going to be semi-trailers with wheels that would be moved in and out? I didn't take it as long-term storage, but.
No, they're definitely trailers, Danny, but they're, they look like rail shipping, semi-trailer length cargo.
Are they on the ground or without?
No, they're on wheels, but they're just, you know, they're beat up and they look like, you know, they've been around the block, so.
Is that, I'm not sure why they're there, but. The owner's rep, can the owner's rep kind of comment on that, please?
Yeah, this is Ryan Spott with Davis &amp; Keel, 111 East Kilborn, Milwaukee, Wisconsin. Can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
So I do believe that there is currently maybe one tenant in there. I don't know exactly what tenant that is, but it's my understanding that these stalls are not meant for any sort of long-term storage or anything like that, just for parking of these trucks as they come and go. As far as the condition of these trucks that are coming and going, I can't really speak to that either, but the intention, like I said, isn't for these to be there for very long periods of time.
From your perspective, these are not your client's trucks?
No. So our client is just the building owner, it could be one of the tenant's trucks that are there, but like I said, they're not intended to be there for long periods of time.
I guess to that, to that point, I mean, as owner of that building, it's incumbent upon your client to convey these conditions and restrictions such that we don't encounter those issues. So I'm, and I'm sure that they're, you know, having done several projects in Oak Creek and the Milwaukee area, they're well aware of that.
Right.
But just to get impart upon them the importance of all of these parcels in Oakview and kind of the, and it's a conditional use permit for a reason. I mean, we don't allow truck storage outside as a permitted use, and there's a reason for that. And when we do issue conditional use permits, and we do so to try and mitigate those impacts, and to the extent that, I mean, if this is going to be recurring, and it's not the, you know, the trailers that we think they're going to be, quite frankly, if the condition of these trailers is not, you know, kind of owing to the operations taking place on the property, you need to go get the landscape plan at a minimum, do a conventional screening there, which I think getting to Alderman Gale's point is, you're absolutely right. I mean, I think, and I don't have the plan in front of me, but that landscaping plan should drive or afford some screening at some point at least for that truck parking area.
Yeah, thank you, Doug. I appreciate your comments, and as you said, HSA, our client, and Oak Creek Industrial, for this particular building has done business in the past in Oak Creek, particularly at 610 West Rossin. So, you know, we're fairly aware of these conditions. The conditions that are imposed for this building are very similar to those conditions over at 610 West Rossin, and I believe, you know, the storage and parking of these vehicles and equipment are addressed in the conditions, and we'll make sure that everything is conveyed to the clients, the tenants accordingly.
Okay. So we can expect some enhanced landscape there? Is that part of, was that part of the conditions there, Doug? Off memory, I know you don't have the document.
Well, it really, the landscaping plan was approved. I'm sorry. The landscaping plan was approved for the completed building, and it did have the truck parking spaces there, so without having that plan in front of me, I would suspect that there are some level of screening that's incorporated in that landscaping plan. It's just that landscaping may not be at a point where it's mature enough to form an effective visual screen. Alderman Gale was alluding to, we actually had some structural components that, green truck carts and other buildings within the.
Okay. Because I can't recall off the top that plan at all, off the top of my head. So, but I know it wasn't long-term. It was just meant to bring a.
If they're not stored there long-term, it solves the problem, but if they're, you know, if they're coming and going.
No, it was never supposed to be long-term, so.
They're long-term now, is what.
They've been there, so who knows what the story is really, so.
Okay. Any other questions? Comments? Greg, anything?
No, thank you.
Okay. Then motion on six, please.
I'll move to approve ordinance 2979, approving a conditional use permit for freight yard, freight terminal, trans-shipment depot facilities in the multi-tenant building at the property at 102 West Oakview Parkway.
Guzekowski, your second. Roll call.
Alderman Gale?
Aye.
Guzekowski?
Aye.
Lorick?
Aye.
Duknia?
Aye.
Item seven, again, consideration of conditional use for Brentwood Animal Hospital for a kennel and boarding facility at 318 West Ryan Road. Krista?
Public hearing number two is to consider a request submitted by Doctors Brad and Brett Osgood, Brentwood Animal Hospital, for a conditional use permit for an animal hospital with kennel and boarding facilities on the property located at 318 West Ryan Road. The applicants are Doctors Brad and Brett Osgood, Brentwood Animal Hospital. The property owner is BAH Ventures LLC. There follows the legal description, and the date of the notice was June 25th, 2020.
Thank you, Krista. Doug?
Thank you again for the record. Doug is Seymour, Director of Community Development. This is a conditional use permit request for, by the Brentwood Animal Hospital for the property at 318 West Ryan Road. Brentwood is seeking this conditional use permit in anticipation of constructing a new facility on this property, actually adjacent to the existing facility, on the location of the existing home, which would then be razed. The council will note that the property, the existing hospital has a conforming conditional use designation, and unfortunately, that didn't carry through to the entirety of the property that Brentwood had acquired over time. So in order to build this new animal hospital, even though they're just moving it, you know, several, 150 feet or so to the east, they still would need to secure this conditional use permit for the entire property. Just to give you some idea, and these plans are being reviewed by the Plan Commission currently, it is, I can see the, I don't know if you can see my cursor here, but the existing facility is on the west side of the property, the new facility, which would be kind of a level and a half with an exposure, would be on the east side of the property, quite a bit more space as a, and more services that we offered as the, as the practice grows to accommodate the growing number of pet owners in Oak Creek. Further included narrative, the new single-story facility would include all the veterinary services with storage and overflow boarding if needed, which would take place in that existing building. So the existing building will stay, it'll just serve as kind of an overflow facility for additional boarding. You do have conditions and restrictions which were attached to your packet, you can kind of see a summary of those with respect to the hours of operation, the operational requirements for the facility, again, no outdoor storage, you've got the requirements for approval of the plans, the architectural plans, landscaping and light plan. So with that in mind, the Plan Commission has reviewed this before as conditional use permit. They have recommended their approval, so this being a public hearing, if anyone, again, has any questions or comments, whether you're in person at the meeting or attending virtually, please indicate your presence. And once directed, please proceed to address your comments or questions. County Council, this public hearing is over.
Thank you, Doug. Once again, we'll make three calls, and we'll also ask virtually if anybody's on the line. So this will be the first call. Kevin, do we have anybody virtually?
Brad Egan, here to answer questions.
Thank you. Second call? Third and final call?
I have a question. I have a question.
And who's speaking, please? Name and address, please.
This is Brad Egan, 6011 Artist Bay Road in West Bend. I am the owner's representative with Keller, the builder of the building and architect. Section seven says time of compliance, 12 months. I believe at last week's meeting, there was no time limit on this conditional use, as they have been in the municipality for so many years, that was waived. Am I incorrect?
That time of compliance provision, excuse me, they can shed some light on that. The time of compliance is the time to start. You're right, I mean, there is no duration attached to this conditional use permit, given that it really is a continuation of the existing use of the property, albeit adjacent to that. This just says that you have to start the project within 12 months.
Very good. I withdraw my question.
Thank you. Are there any other questions before we close the public hearing? Seeing none, we'll close the public hearing and move on to item eight, which is consideration of that conditional use permit for the animal hospital. Questions from council? Comments? Ken, go right ahead.
Just to comment, gentlemen, just wanted to say, appreciate the confidence and the worth of all to have the, make the investment of the community. We appreciate what you've already done, what you propose the service with, so good luck.
Anything else?
Well, I'll rewrite what I had mentioned, mentioned at last week's Plan Commission. I myself, having gone to school with your brother Bruce, we, I'm going to miss the pool most of all. We spent a lot of time swimming there, but the bigger picture is what, what you guys are doing for the city, as Alderman Gale said, and you guys have been a foundation, so it's great to have you. Look at us and continue to stick with us and grow your practice, so thank you.
Agreed. There was a lot of community support at planning for this. It seems like every commissioner had visited your facility with a pet at one time or another, so it's a welcome addition to the city. So with that, motion on eight.
Guzekowski makes a motion at the Council of Ordinance 2980, an ordinance to approve a conditional use permit for an animal hospital with kennel and boarding facilities on the property at 318 West Ryan Road.
Egan, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Guzekowski?
Aye.
Lorick?
Aye.
Duknia?
Aye.
Gale?
Aye.
And new business. Item nine is summarization of the treasures, report on investment accounts for the month ending June 30th. We have Barb with us tonight, virtually. Welcome, Barb. Oh, you're muted.
Sorry, I hit the button, it must.
There you go.
Sorry. Okay, so treasury report ending June 30th, 2020. Beginning balance was $43,612,720.31. Ending balance, $40,911,344.96. We had interest earned of $36,393.51. Beginning to end balance was a decrease of $2,701,375.35. The bigger activity for the month, which kind of explains the decrease, we did have tax collection of just under $1.6 million, but we had debt service payments going out of $1.2 million. And then our April and May tax collection, we had to do a settlement in June of about $3.2 million.
Questions for Barb? Barb, at the six-month mark, is this about par for any given year, even with or without the pandemic, or are things a little slower coming in?
No, I, from what I've looked at, it's been pretty much even to what it normally is. The delinquent is maybe a little bit higher, and then we, you know, had the waiver properties, which, you know, that wasn't a huge amount, but I would say it's been pretty status quo.
Thank you.
Yep.
Anything else for Barb? No? Nothing. Thank you very much, Barb.
Thank you, Barb. Thank you.
Item 10 is a COVID-19 update, and I think we have Darcy. I don't see her on the screen, but I'm sure she's out there somewhere. There she is.
Good evening. I'm Darcy DuBois, Health Officer with the City of Oak Creek. So as of this evening, we've had 383 residents of Oak Creek who have tested positive for COVID. We've had just over 4,300 residents test negative for COVID. Eight percent of those individuals who have been tested have tested positive here in Oak Creek. We've had 13 deaths of Oak Creek residents, and 247 of the individuals who have tested positive have been released from isolation, have recovered from their symptoms. We have seen a large increase in positive, new positive cases over the past couple of weeks. I'm just going to share my screen here and share just one graph. You see a graph? Okay. So this is a graph that's showing the weekly positive. So this is a graph that's showing the weekly positive tests since the beginning of the pandemic back in March. You can see that the last couple of weeks, we've had a significant increase over any of the rest of the weeks that we've seen. So last week we had 72 new cases here in Oak Creek. The week before we had 39. The first half of this week so far, we've had, I believe, 32. So we seem to be on track to have another week with quite a few new cases. That's something that we're seeing across the southeastern region and especially we've seen faster than normal, not normal, faster than, faster growth in the number of new cases in the suburbs in Milwaukee County than we had seen earlier on in the pandemic.
Darcy, quick question. What, what do you attribute the growth in with that last weekend? Is it, do you think it coincides with Fourth of July weekend or is that too far away from the Fourth of July? Where are you saying it's coming from kind of?
Yeah, I definitely think that's part of it. We are seeing, when we do our, our case interviews with someone who tests positive, we do ask them about kind of the activities or events that they've been participating in. And we are certainly hearing from more people who are testing positive that they've been participating in a variety of activities, whether that's a Fourth of July party, an organized sporting event, some other kind of gathering. So I think that we are seeing just with summer and as happens every summer, a lot more gathering of people. And we are seeing even though people are, many people are gathering outside, we're still seeing disease spread at those outdoor events.
Thank you.
The other change that we're seeing is with the individuals who are testing positive, they're identifying more people that they have exposed. So those are their contacts. So in addition to more positive cases, we have many more contacts that we are notifying and providing information and asking to quarantine in those 14 days after their contact. Additionally, we continue to work with businesses. We're seeing a lot of our businesses, as is across the region again, impacted by COVID in some way. So we're answering questions and providing guidance to those as we can. And we've also been working with Leslie on our community messaging, so really trying to continue to push that message to keep, keep that physical distance, those six feet between individuals who don't live in the same household as much as possible. We do recommend avoiding gatherings and groups, group settings as much as possible just because of the number of cases we're seeing coming out of those types of events. Recommend wearing a mask when those six feet of distancing cannot be maintained and also providing lots of information about where individuals can get tested and how to, where to get tested, who should be tested and kind of what testing positive or negative means. Any questions?
Darcy Alderman Dukenia, third district. You know, we've seen this spike in identifying the number of cases. What about the number of hospitalizations? That doesn't seem to have spiked as much as the actual discovering of new cases. Is that correct?
You are correct. That's a, a good question. So we are hearing just this week that hospitals are reporting that they're starting to see an increase in hospitalizations. We, we know that hospitalizations are kind of a lagging indicator of a spike in cases. So we tend to see numbers go up first and then hospitalizations follow. So we'll see if that happens. But I think the other important thing to note is that many, the majority of these new cases are amongst younger individuals who tend to have fewer underlying health conditions. And so they, even though they have COVID, they're not getting as seriously ill and they're not requiring hospitalization as older adults might.
Thank you.
Questions? Greg, anything?
No questions at this time. Thank you. Darcy, as we continue to see our numbers kind of trend up and particularly in southeastern Wisconsin, we're seeing other communities kind of take those numbers into account and do different actions. I don't want to bring it up for discussion here. It's not on our agenda, but you know, we will keep the council on alert for a special meeting if we'd have to discuss any policy changes regarding masks, things of that nature. And particularly, we just may have to look internally at our policy going forward as the library is becoming increasingly more used, less and less people are coming in and just leaving. So we may have to internally look at that a little bit and use best practices where possible and, and look at what other communities are doing and where the data is being driven. So first and foremost, we want to protect, protect our constituents, our employees, and again, avoid any interruption of daily business. So just keep that on your radar. Thank you. Anything else for Darcy? Okay. Thank you, Darcy. Keep up, keep up the good, long hours of work. Thank you very much. I know it's a terrible time, but thank you for your work. Item 11, another informational. It is our mid-year budget monitoring report for 2020. Bridget's with us tonight. She came with a PowerPoint.
To figure out how to unmute first, one second. There we go. There we go. All right. Good evening. We have our second quarter ending 2020, but the actual report, we are going to go through maybe a little bit quicker than normal because we'll have further conversation on our financials and where we're sitting as a related to COVID, but our next agenda item. So for a quick pressure, you will be looking at charts and graphs through the quarter and we are going to be focusing on our larger funds as listed. Consistently throughout the presentation, you will see our 2020 budget amount in blue and in green, you will see our year-to-date. Summary of our general fund revenues and expenditures. Revenues are staying at roughly 56% of expenses at 43, which is definitely a little bit lower on the expenditure side, which is great for where we're sitting and what we're dealing with right now and pretty on par with what we have expected mid-year for our revenue. Looking at our significant revenues in general fund, again taxes, it's normal hereby to buy that we've received everything except essentially our August settlement. So normal 58% halfway through the year, as well as normal that the rest of the tax and the state aid, we have not booked our July journal entries and then we'll receive final payment taxes. There's just the rest of the smaller revenues with our general fund, nothing of great concern at this point, but we will dive deeper on that with the next agenda item. Switching gears to the expenditures, again, we group them in our larger categories for the general fund. Everybody is under 50%, some are well under 50%, which is great to see. We really appreciate the fact that the departments have kind of tightened up their, their belt as we are going through COVID. Here is your detailed chart specifically showing each department and each division. Again, everybody is under 50% with the exception of the emergency operations budget line item that is sitting at 216% of budget because that is where we have asked all of the departments and divisions to charge any expenditures relating to COVID to that EOC budget. It will just make it easier for us as we go through seeking reimbursement from the state and the federal government. So you'll see that end up coming down or at the minimum, the offsetting revenue in the general fund later this year. Switching to our other major funds, looking at their revenues halfway through the year, solid waste EMS dispatch, those are again normally going to be at the higher end of your revenues because they are majority tax levy funded. We Energies is also not out of the norm. We received that payment at the end of June, so that journal entry just has not hit. Nothing of concern on this chart right now either. Looking at the same major funds, but the expenditures, again, kind of same story here. Everybody is under, under 50%, exactly what we want to be seeing right now. In our health insurance fund, we have seen a reduced amounts of claims and dollar amount for those claims, as you may expect with people really not going to see the doctor or trying to avoid going to the doctor right now. We are still kind of hedging our bets, waiting to see if things open up and you know, if that's really just delaying some of the elective procedures that people may, may have been having. Utilities and fuel, another really great slide with great news. We have significant savings right now with our, our fuel accounts and you know, electric, everything is sitting here under the 50% mark. So couldn't ask for a better scenario. Just reviewing in a summary, again, we're looking at 88% of our largest revenue source has been collected with the property taxes. Your emergency operations budget is, you know, the main focal point on the expenditures and that is by design. So we can go into any questions that you may have right now or we can wait and hold them for next.
I do think we have a couple of questions.
Okay. Getting back to two slides ago, in regard to the significant, I wouldn't call it savings, but just the low percentage of electric and fuel use, certainly there's operational efficiencies, but isn't a lot of that, is that due to just us being slow in, in services? Things have kind of slowed down operationally for the city or am I mistaken in that?
I know that we have done some work on our lighting and things like that within our building. I do not think that that is really what this is attributed to at the moment. You know, we did have some periods of time where we didn't have as many staff members within the building, so we could have done some of that. But I really think this is just a reflection of how conservatively we end up budgeting. You know, these are those accounts that can choose to ebb and flow, but we have tried our best to keep it pretty even keeled. So you know, the last couple of years, we have been coming pretty under budget with the majority of these accounts. Electricity is actually the one that is surprising me the most, but I have not had the ability to dive deeper into that one. I expected us to be closer to our budget number with the electricity, but the fuel, I did expect us to be this low, given our budget.
Yeah, those are some eye-popping numbers. You know, unless we're expecting some significant increases with the winter months coming on, but boy, only 17% to budget after a half, half a year of operation is, that's incredible. So thank you.
Other questions? Greg, anything from you?
No, thank you. No questions.
I'm seeing none, Bridget. I think you're on to your next one, which is another informational on the COVID-19 financial mitigation plan. Or is that you, Andrew?
I'll take that one there. I think that's purposeful that we put the agenda items in the order that they were because it's a great segue into our COVID financial mitigation plan. And really our COVID financial mitigation plan right now isn't the plan. It was a little misleading of me. It's really an assessment on which we'll formulate a plan and we'll talk a little bit about those components. But as suggested in the staff report, I do not feel that we need to take drastic maneuvers in terms of staffing, layoffs, furloughs, et cetera, that a lot of, that you see in the private sector and that you also see in a large plurality of municipalities nationwide who are less reliant on property taxes and more reliant on other volatile revenue sources such as sales tax. So when you see those stories on the coasts and other states about laying off, I mean, the city of Milwaukee is another one, you know, they have a large revenue stream from parking revenue right downtown. Well, for three months or whatever and ongoing now, they're losing millions, tens of millions of dollars in parking revenue. So they have to make more drastic policy decisions on controlling the cost side of the equation. So we have the expenditure side of the equation and then we have the revenue side of the equation. And at the end of the year, you hope that your revenues meet or exceed your expectations and you hope your expenditures don't. So you hope, and, and we have a tradition of budgeting revenues very conservatively as Bridget just mentioned. So as we'll go through the actual line items, building permit revenue is, is a really exemplary example, is a really good example of that conservative budgeting in our revenues. We can't create more revenue. We can always make policy decisions to cut expenses. But here, and why we're focusing in on the revenue, we can't just create a new fee mid-year and, and, and create revenue. That's very difficult. A little more static than our expenditures that we can make decisions to cut a service or you know, lay off employees or do other drastic things. We're not in that position, not suggesting that we will be in that position, but we do need to focus in on the, on the revenue. So building permit revenue, we historically budget at, you know, the rate of growth of a normal community, which Oak Creek's growth is not a rate of, you know, normal right now. But if you, as we talked about at the budget, if we were to ride the ebb and flow of building permit revenue, what do we do in two years or eight years or 12 years when we don't have that significant building activity in our community or maybe it's an economic recession, et cetera? We have to struggle to figure out how we balance the budget because we have expenditures to meet with our revenue sources. So this COVID financial, COVID financial mitigation assessment is really just that at this time. We think that, and I'm going to paint the worst case scenario for you on the revenue side, we think that by the end of the year, the savings in our expenditures, despite the extraordinary costs related to COVID, and then some improvement on our revenues here, because I'm giving a pretty bleak picture of those revenues, i.e. will exceed our budget in some areas, building permits, whereas we have, we will not meet our budgeted revenue expectations in areas like program recreation fees, court fines and penalties and forfeitures. So we think that this will settle out at the end of the year and what we'll commit is to apprising the council probably in the early September months, just so we do not foreclose on policy decisions on the expenditure side of things, should we really need to go that route to balance our budget. So I want to dip into the revenue picture here and I'm going to share my screen because I think it'll be a little bit easier to follow along. If I can. So as you saw on your council packets, above the line, we have our, our pretty sure revenue screen. You don't.
Kevin will save the day.
Comes along with me. Just need, he just needed to stand by me that night. Osmosis. Above the line, as you saw in your council packet, we have our pretty sure revenue streams in terms of our taxes. We know we've levied taxes. We know we're going to get taxes in. A lot of these are functions of not realizing revenue yet because they haven't been journal entered in accounting and they, state shared revenue, there's another settlement, large settlement, I believe in November. So we think that those, and we're crossing our fingers, that there's nothing funky that's going to go on there. The one item I have highlighted for you is the motel hotel room tax. We obviously have a large source of revenue there and that revenue is extremely volatile. The 203,757 that we have booked, and these are year-to-date numbers as of seven, of July 15th. So these are more current than the numbers Bridget had just shared with you. I should note that. The first quarter revenue for room tax was 203,757. We will probably be, if I had to hazard a guess, in the tens of thousands of dollars for our second quarter revenue. Third quarter isn't looking too much better according to our tourism commission representative who is in that industry, but we think that we will eke out by the end of the year, the allocation of hotel motel room tax that the general fund relies upon, that $450,000. So that's an area of, an area to watch because it does obviously hurt or it negatively impacts the overall picture I'll show you today. So we think we're pretty good above the black line, but there are certain revenues below that are a little more, a little less sure, I should say. And I want to talk about how we've built this model because we've been, I've been looking at this. model because we've been, I've been looking at this since probably early April to project out. Uh, as you can see, we have a, uh, 25% loss column, a 50% loss column and a 75% loss column. For us just trying, trying to put our minds around, well, you know, what if we lost, you know, what if we lost revenue for, per those line items in those bands? We wanted to just kind of gauge what would a 25 up to a 75% loss look. On the far right-hand side, you see what we call the more surgical case, which is, okay, we're not going to lose 25%. We're not going to lose 50 or 75. We're not just going to guess. We have a better estimate of what we think, uh, we will realize of the amount that's still outstanding in that column that's says amount outstanding. Uh, we know we will lose revenue for the year, uh, for the school resource officer. We already have, uh, as the, uh, schools were shut down from, I can't remember the exact date, but April, mid-April-ish, somewhere through the end of the year. This model, again, being conservative, is, is saying that our SROs are not going to be going back into the schools in the fall. Doesn't sound like that's the case, but I'm painting the picture of, you know, worst case scenario, we're not realizing any reimbursement from the school district if they're not utilizing those resource officers. Moving forward, we have our building permit revenues. Um, those are trending very well. Uh, building activity really hasn't slowed down with one caveat, hasn't slowed down that we have seen. Uh, there are a couple of large projects out there that if they continue to move forward, uh, the hub 13 apartments, that will be a very nice revenue shot in the arm pulling those initial permits. Uh, and as I described to the council here as of late, we know, um, that we cannot rely on the, uh, the Stand Rock hospitality revenue until, uh, they break ground next year. I'll come back to that though. Another area of concern, actually another good, uh, one, one positive story here. Our interest on our investments has come in a lot better than expected. So we're actually improving our revenue picture a little bit, uh, by, uh, exceeding our budget there. We just don't quite know where that's going to end. And that, those interests, uh, that interest income is also allocated out to various funds at the end of the year. So we, we thought we would realize about $410,000 total and that, as you see in the column there, 205,050, we've allocated out about 48 to 52% to the other funds in years past. So that's kind of how we're gauging that. But, but a good story. Significant area of concern, court fines. There was not a ton of activity when we had safer at home, et cetera. We don't quite know how that's going to rebound. We don't quite know how the pipeline of court, uh, municipal court cases and fines and fees, et cetera, are going to rebound. So we're being very conservative there. Uh, and I missed one here. Maybe I didn't highlight it. The last one I wanted to bring up, and I'm probably going to fumble around trying to find it. So I'll just mention it. Uh, we have a, approximately, uh, here you go, $140,000 budgeted annually for registration fees for our various recreation programs. We've realized $7,300. That's not something that's going to pick up. I don't have any hope of that. So, uh, we're realizing, we're, we're expecting a very, uh, you know, very minor increase in, in, uh, that revenue line item through the rest of the year, and that could be next to nothing also. So again, a significant shot to the overall, uh, revenue picture. I am, if you look at the bottom, the kind of the baseline of this model, I am projecting right now a negative, uh, 540,000, a $540,000 deficit in our revenue. I'm trying to be alarmist, but again, as I mentioned before, we probably come in lower on the expenditure side if a history repeats itself to, to chip away at that. And also what I'm showing here at the bottom right hand is I think there's additional opportunities where the certain, where certain revenue line items, particularly building permits, and maybe an uptick if we do well, better than expected on fines and forfeitures in our municipal court. If you look at the five-year average of fines and forfeitures from municipal court, it's about 380. So if we got back to an average year, even though we fell short of the budget, we could realize a $90,000, uh, $90,000 to the good of that deficit, to bring that deficit down. Similarly, looking at a, uh, a previous four-year average of our building permit revenue line items and why we did 2015 to 2018, I didn't want to go through the pain of trying to discern what was related to Amazon. 2019 was an anomaly. So to have used the revenue from 2019 with, I think we received like $1.3 million of permit revenue from that Amazon, uh, building, that would have been a little bit of a, um, that would have been a little bit of an anomaly. It would have skewed the numbers. But I think there could be if we hit, you know, you'd like, if we hit revenues as we have in years past from our building activity, again, if the hub 13 and another couple of projects get off the ground still this year, uh, maybe another hundred, what's the, you know, 215, $220,000 of additional revenue we could realize there. I think there's one other. Oh, and then of course, as we mentioned before, the SROs, uh, and I didn't even include this in the overall picture, but I think, you know, if they, kids go back to school and our SROs are being, uh, kind of deployed into the schools, we'll have revenues there, kind of using that as a pad a bit. So if we look at the other potential sources of revenue, if we were to at least get back to average on some of those line items that we've exceeded expectations in many years in a row now, uh, I think there's probably about an additional $300,000 of revenue. That brings our total deficit to a little more manageable, a little less alarmist number of $235,000. Um, and as you saw in the presentation, we may, even with the presence of COVID and all the extraordinary costs, we may come in less, you know, more than that under budget in our expenditures. And we're hedging that because of a couple of things. What we've done, we know right off the bat, we're going to realize savings of approximately $150,000. Uh, we are not replacing in 2020, our urban forester. We are not replacing our, our finance director. Sorry, Bridgette. We're not even letting her go. Uh, we are not replacing our recreation director and we have about $60,000 of wages attributed to that, that code compliance person that we budgeted for, that we're just not going to be ready to pull the trigger on by at least till the near, the end of the year. So there's 150, $1,300 of known savings there that also improves this picture. And if you look at the things that we just looked at like fuel and other things, despite COVID, despite, you know, public safety overtime for various things going on in the community, outside of the community even, we think that this settles out and we have a better than break even year anyway. That would be the best outcome. So in sum, we will keep an eye on this, but if we did have to come back with a plan, the plan would very likely not look like, how do we limit our expenditures this year to make for a break even budget? The strategy would be more of a two-year budget strategy. We would look at this year, we would see how far of a negative, we would, we would see our overall negative variance at the end of the year when you account for actual expenditures and actual revenues. And we would say to the council, we are going to borrow money from one of our funds. We are going to make an accounting maneuver from a, a healthier fund. This is all general fund. And next year, heading into the budget, we would need to reserve some of our levy capacity to repay that fund back. So in, at the end of this year, we were still looking at a negative $300,000 come end of November, December, when we project that out, we would say, we're going to take from, say, the special assessments fund or another healthier fund. We would borrow that money from that fund, make our budget break even on paper for the year, and then replenish that fund in the 2021 budget. Does that easily, would, did I, did I explain that?
No, I think you got it.
Okay.
Questions for Andrew?
One.
Oh, go ahead.
If the council though, as I believe I put in the staff report, if the council wants to, if the council wants to direct the staff to look at, no, we prefer to look at ways to control expenses this year to make this budget break even. Uh, we can certainly do that, uh, but I don't know that we need to pull that lever yet. And we can still have that discussion if we bring this back in, say, early September and give you an update on where we're at here. We can, we can still have that discussion.
Okay. Questions, comments? Nothing from Chris. Anything, Cam?
No.
Uh, Greg, anything?
No, thank you. No questions.
Rich?
No.
No, I think it's a good assessment at this time. Again, nobody has a crystal ball. If, if things continue on the path we're on, um, I think you're pretty much in the ballpark. Hopefully we don't get a curve ball and things go off the track again.
I mean, your, your risk is your expenditure you don't anticipate, but how do you anticipate it? So.
And regarding, we don't, we don't anticipate, we cannot anticipate. We certainly do anticipate. We can't anticipate what the overall COVID expenditures, extraordinary expenditures resulting from COVID will be. And I don't know how I failed to mention this because in the staff report, uh, with the routes to recovery program from the state of Wisconsin, based on our population, of that $200 million fund from the state, we are, um, we have the ability to be reimbursed up to 400, excuse me, $582,000. Early interpretations of that program were a little more stringent. Guidelines were a little more stringent in what expenses would be reimbursable. Uh, we're finding that as, as this is being implemented, there's a more liberal construct of how those will be interpreted and maybe overtime wages and even some regular wages of public safety, uh, officials can be included as eligible expenses. So we may do very well on that. Um, and that again, just kind of wipes out the discussion we've just had for probably five minutes more than we needed to or, or 10, uh, because there's, there's, there's certain, uh, ideas that, you know, we're going to get the vast majority of that $582,000.
Let's hope. Let's hope. Okay. Thank you. Um, moving on, item 13 is consideration of a resolution extending the public health emergency in the city of Oak Creek in response to the COVID-19 coronavirus. Is Andrew, you taking this one or you want me to paraphrase it?
Sure.
This is nothing more than an extension of the emergency order, uh, that we did 60 days ago. This is another 60-day extension. Uh, this allows us to go after the financial means, um, Andrew was talking about and, um, have the ability to exercise other, other options. Did I sum that up well enough? Or you want to get more specific, Melissa?
Thanks, Mayor. Good evening. I don't need to get more specific. I think I would just support what you said and, you know, the council has made these determinations and really it's allowing us all, our elected officials and staff administratively to make decisions that we, as Andrew just said, for the previous item, we are anticipating a number of things. It's also for the unforeseen, unanticipated, to allow us to react in the direction that you want us to, to make sure everyone is protected, um, in terms of our financial outlays, in terms of our other safety measures to be able to respond.
And just for the public record, it will go to September 21st, 2020 currently. Questions, comments? Okay, seeing none, motion.
They'll move to approve resolution 12174 to 072120, extending the public health emergency in the city of Oak Creek in response to the COVID-19 coronavirus.
This is Gail's second.
Roll call.
Alderman Lorik.
Aye.
Dukniak.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Kuzakowski.
Aye.
And item 14 is consideration of a resolution adopting City of Oak Creek 2022, 2020, 2022 strategic action plan. Andrew?
Sure. Thank you, Mayor. Um, I have a, as I promised you, we have a very, a, a much more professional version of our strategic plan that doesn't include some of the plan notes that I have, but I think for, uh, ease of discussion, uh, with the council tonight, I'd like to utilize my screen and the, in the item, uh, the, the document that was in the packet, but no, pending the outcome of tonight, uh, we have a professional, more professional document prepared by our communications coordinator extraordinaire. Uh, so that will be more of the public facing document, but this, this one's more of a working draft for, uh, facilitating discussion. Uh, in, uh, I know this was a Tuesday because it was a council meeting, but I also know it was June 6th of 2017 because it was my birthday when we approved our first ever, oh, well, our first strategic action plan since 1989. Uh, there was a very concerted, uh, a very facilitated and comprehensive process via a consultant that yielded that 2017 through 2020 strategic action plan, which we're currently operating, uh, under up until today. I think that it goes without saying, because the council is very well aware, um, based on your directives, based on the community's input, based on our staff's input, uh, we created that document and we have been working the hell out of that document. Uh, that is a guidepost, more than a guidepost. Uh, it's a gospel for the things that we value and the priority projects in this community. And I think we've worked a strategic plan as well as any community that I've ever been associated with or know about. Uh, it is at the forefront of everything we do. And there have been significant accomplishments, foundational studies and tangible work product that has resulted from that current strategic plan that we've been operating under, uh, to everybody's credit, uh, including the council's credit for their work on that. But we're rounding out the time of, the time period of our first strategic plan at the end of 2020 that would, you know, expire. We always want to have a rolling successor strategic action plan. This was a little bit of a truncated version of that process. As the council is aware, uh, at the end of 2021, we would be due for another community survey every five years in 11 and 16. Uh, we have community, we have surveyed the community to inform priorities of the council, uh, issues, concerns out there from our public, and that informs our strategic action plan document. We thought that since we still have, uh, still have a lot of work to do on our current strategic plan, and we know that other priorities have surfaced for the community, for the council, for the staff, that we would kind of addend and create a new interim strategic plan, rolling over some of those initiatives and adding those new initiatives to carry us through that time period in mid to late 2021, where we would survey the community and have a more facilitated strategic action, uh, strategic plan discussion. So that's what we're here today to discuss. Uh, again, this plan before the council is really an inventory of things that are being, uh, still yet to be achieved of our current strategic action plan. And then five new initiatives that are listed in the staff report that are as follows. Uh, number one, develop and implement a comprehensive neighborhood preservation code compliance program. Number two, implement a streetlight capital improvement and LED conversion project. Three, undertake a total compensation analysis for certain non-represented positions to ensure competitive, competitive competitiveness in the marketplace. Four, plan a city gateway corridor in conjunction with the Drexel Avenue rehabilitation project. We'll hear about, more about that later with, uh, Mike Simmons, city engineer. And then five, lastly, market creekside crossing marketplace as an entertainment district. So we didn't want to add, it seems like a lot. There's a lot there. Don't get me wrong. And some of those aren't going to be complete by the time we are facilitating our next strategic action plan and they will necessarily roll into that 2022 and beyond plan. But we know those have risen to a certain level of importance in the community or among the council. And those are added in here, uh, in the new, new plan before you tonight. Just walking through the document, there were some highlighted areas that were serving as kind of discussion placeholders, uh, because there's a slight, uh, verbiage change or a discussion point that we wanted to bring up with you. Um, moving through the document here on the screen, uh, under our vibrant and diverse cultural opportunity, critical success factor, uh, become a city known for its successful special events and gatherings. Wow, what kind of progress have we made in three years on that front, three and a half years on that front? Uh, very robust quality of life things that many people bring to life in this community, um, that work here at city hall and, and outside, our volunteers, et cetera. But the initial strategic plan had a, an opportunity or an objective to really celebrate culture and diversity in our community. And one of the things to the mayor's credit that he helped lift off the ground last year was a cafe event, culture, arts, food and entertainment event. So the, kind of the, the revised language of this is really just emphasize and continue to grow that event. Under the same critical, critical success factor, we had provide additional cultural and recreational opportunities for the city's senior population, just as a note to Just as a note to the council, we are engaged, as you know, with the Oak Creek Franklin School District for a joint recreation platform. And while we will certainly value and make certain that that relationship moving forward values and does implement all ages recreation, including adults and 50 and better, we don't quite know, you know, a lot of that rests on the outcome of that discussion. Under our thoughtful development and prosperous economy, we have established city objectives for handling demand for single-family lot inventory. Doug and the Community Development Department put together a very robust white paper report entitled Handling Demand for Single Family Lot Inventory, which was presented to you in June of 18. There were a series of implementation objectives from that analysis in this Strategic Action Plan, this 2020 to 2022 plan, makes certain that we are still following through on those implementation steps. Number three, examine public-private partnerships to facilitate development of a recreation center. Talked a little bit about this before. Really, that is pending the outcome of the joint recreation platform concept. Additionally, a lot of things have happened since we included this in our original strategic plan, namely, a significant investment by the part of our taxpayers in buildings and facilities and other sports-related venues and education and recreation venues. So I don't know quite how the council still values looking at development of our own recreation center, bricks and mortar. I think we may be past that discussion in our community for the time being, but we wanted to keep it current in case opportunities did present themselves or in case we don't have a joint recreation platform moving forward in 2021 with the school district. So one of our, one of our new initiatives is to develop the city gateway corridor in conjunction with the Drexel Avenue Rehabilitation Project. These new initiatives, probably to the chagrin of the staff, are very detailed in their action steps, probably a little more granular than we really need to be, very focused on the actual objective above it. But it is a guide, a pathway for how we are going to attack kind of the discussions we're going to have to further those initiatives. Arcade Creekside Crossing Marketplace as an entertainment district, for those viewing at home or otherwise. The Creekside Crossing Marketplace is the area south of IKEA. And I think we've expressed ideas, goals, development objectives, to really have that be a vibrant place with certain nightlife opportunities. And of course, the catalyst of that is the Hotel and Conference Center that will very hopefully be breaking ground in now 2021. Safe welcoming and engaged community. Number one, this is, this is in our current strategic plan. Engage neighborhood groups, associations as an ally in crime reduction and prevention measures. A huge shout out, and we did hold this over into the successor plan, but that is not to say that Chief Anderson, Chief Kresik, and their staffs have not made significant strides in this area. I just want to be very clear here. There has been great strides in terms of social media presence, next door, engaging various sectors of the community, whether it be the faith-based community, the school district, hotel managers, multifamily apartment managers. And just recently, you probably have seen some of the retooling that went on during the COVID, where we're giving the community virtual tours of our 911 communication center and the PD. So I want to commend Steve and Mike and their staffs on that. But I thought it important that that remain in the plan because this is a very evolving thing, as we all know, going on. So to ignore that, maybe this is still an area of focus. We'll continue to do the things that we have done and started and initiated. But I think there's going to be a different lens with which we view these things moving forward. Develop and implement a comprehensive neighborhood preservation and code compliance program. I know council's really aware and has valued that. We budgeted that for that position. Probably at least three quarters of the way in this current operating budget. We'll go over those. I think I'm missing one more. New initiative is to undertake a total compensation analysis for non-represented positions. We have, I think our last comp and class study was pre-Act 10, if I remember correctly. We really need to understand that we're competitive in the marketplace for not only retention, but certainly expansion in the future. Really need to determine what the city's compensation philosophy is moving forward. And we know we also have some compression issues among union, non-union positions in the, in the community.
Andrew, can I ask you a few final questions?
Sure.
Prior page. I'm not familiar with this term. Maybe it's obvious what it means. But Section 2B, create a community area network. What is, what is that? What's the kind of a?
That is an excellent question for Kevin, and he's here tonight.
I know, it's IT related.
So community area network is just a network, fiber optic network between, it'll be the city of Oak Creek, the school district, potentially MTC, Frehder. It's really big up in Eau Claire, Triple Falls area. They're countywide. Wagsha has one set up that's for school districts, cities. Currently, we are connected to the city of South Milwaukee. And Greenfield's connected to a couple other networks there. But having Frehder in Oak Creek, as well as MTC, and even the county, there's a lot of opportunity for collaboration, for building and expanding the fiber networks in Oak Creek.
And how do we, how do we lever that? Or what are the benefits of?
Some of the benefits, once we get the conduit in the ground, with partnerships, we can also open it up to leasing at certain points. So then we could also increase revenue by leasing it to ISPs to get the various business parks in Oak Creek.
Do outside entities find that valuable when they're looking at?
Yep. And Triple Falls, they, and Eau Claire specifically too, they've used it quite a bit to leverage bringing businesses in. And it's really big for the school districts, for interconnection. Normally, they're countywide. But trying to get something started more centrally in Oak Creek is a good idea first, and then kind of expand it to a regional one after that.
You need the cooperation of your fellow IT managers?
Yep, and we've been talking, we've had a couple meetings with the school district already, kind of laying plans and trying, trying to discuss potential routes and that sort of stuff at this point.
Financial source? Grand stuff out of pocket?
All of it, yes, correct. I believe also, not only the business park, potential business park expansions or creation in the future, but we have had discussions about a partnership with, I think, the Oak Creek Franklin School, about getting better capabilities down to the lakefront development as well. So that might be a little more in the immediate. But certainly, there are gaps in the community.
The watering utilities, there's a notable missing link there.
Another one, and fire station two, if you recall.
Cool, thanks, Ken.
So just to pitch here on our financial stability, we added a little more detail than we ever have. And you know, our council is aware that we've been looking at a multi-year strategy here for when Tex increment district number seven really turns the corner on increment generation. And right now, we are currently levy-supporting that from projects for the Drexel Avenue interchange, as well as our 27th Street improvements from '09 to '12, somewhere in that area, if I recall correctly. With the TID being able to support that debt in the next year or two, next year, next budget or two, there's a significant opportunity to move that levy support to those debt, to those debt instruments, and have additional levy capacity to do some things with, whether that be capital or whatever their council may choose. So I wanted to make sure that was front and center in our plan.
How many years left on Tid 7?
I believe the natural expiration is 2027 or 2028. Our expenditure period would be five years before that, though. So we really have to make some decisions on that. And again, at the, at the end of that increment, at the end of that district, with the increment kind of coming in how it, how it is, we have some opportunities maybe to do some improvements to putes, if you've, if you've lost teeth there from 27th Street to the bridge over the interchange or the highway overpass. You know, there's some other opportunities where we might be able to leverage that district while it's still open, in addition to some of the things we've been talking about. And lastly, just the plan note, I think it's lastly, nope, two, two more. We had in our current strategic plan, perform a capacity review and analysis on local collector and arterial streets. This remains in the plan, still a valuable discussion to have. But we have not had a ton of necessarily opportunity or real push or interest among the council, or really, at the staff level, to urbanize areas and really look at improving capacity via urbanization. And then, of course, as you know, we have had an extensive analysis done on our potential LED conversion project for our city's streetlights, as well as our leased streetlights through We Energies. There are also certain other capital improvement needs. While we studied that, and the previous, I guess now current Strategic Action Plan called for an examination of that, we've examined it, and now it's time to decide the particulars of moving forward, funding sources, how that looks, feels, how we, how we pull that off. So really, this is implementing that project. And I think that's it. So I know that was a little long. But Strategic Action Plan is extremely valuable document to us. As you know, we bring things back to you based, in accordance with it, we, you, the staff, the council, make financial decisions based on that Strategic Action Plan. And it's been just a vital document to guiding our, our work here.
Questions, comments? For Andrew, anybody?
Just a thought, Andrew, that, you know, this, this process started with your predecessor. You know, kind of ground around for a while. And you, it's, you know, kind of, you wrestled it into a final form and got it approved. So we appreciate you and the staff, you know, taking, taking it seriously, guiding us. Part-timers up here in terms of doing what's right for the city. This is a good update, and we look forward to actually the next iteration, taking a whack at it again.
Great. Yeah, Ken kind of hit it right on the head. We are part-timers. They don't exactly give you a manual on how this whole stuff works in the city, whether you're an alderman or a mayor. This really serves as kind of an instruction booklet as to what the community plan is. So Andrew kind of said it. It's, it's like the gospel. When you do have questions of why are we doing things? Or does it fit our mission? You can go right back to this and, and pretty much get back on track. So thank you for all the hard work putting it together. It takes a lot to do this. I know they run over it in a quick amount of time, but there's a vast amount of input going on here. Like you just learned, IT is inputting into this on things we would have never thought about that are going to be just, you know, very, very important as the city continues to develop, change, and grow with technology. So that. Motion on 14 to adopt that Strategic Action Plan, please.
Thanks, Mayor. Gail, we'll move to adopt Resolution 12177-072021, adopting the City of Oak Creek 2020, 2022 Strategic Action Plan.
Mr. Kalskiel, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Dukenyak.
Aye.
Gail.
Aye.
Guzakowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Item 15, consideration of a resolution for an emergency resolution consolidating poll places due to the COVID-19 for the upcoming election. Krista, are you going to speak on it, or Melissa?
I can.
Either way.
I'll start. Krista can fill in any gaps. This, actually, the council had seen before when the clerk's office brought it prior to the last election, the spring election, in terms of the need to literally consolidate polling places. And this is just that, in terms of this resolution, it's asking for the approval to do so in anticipation of the August 11th election. So to that extent, all election voting is to be combined and relocated at Oak Creek East Middle School.
Great. Thank you, Melissa. Questions?
Oh, yeah.
I guess the only thing I'll say is, again, this isn't a necessary means with COVID going on. We're having a very hard time finding poll workers. So we consolidated, we were very successful in the spring. We had a high number of absentee ballots sent in. If you're going to do that, contact the clerk's office. And my advice to you is read that envelope and make sure you do it properly. Please don't add to the workload of having it resent out. There's a great cost to the city in doing that. We do want you to exercise your right to vote. We encourage it. But please, do it properly. Anything else, Krista?
Alderman Dukenyak, third district. Krista, you and I discussed this earlier today. Is there any plan or consideration in place to the November election? And how, you know, the city clerk's staff is going to address what are probably going to be some very challenging circumstances that will still exist in November?
Yeah, with COVID, we really don't know what's going to happen in the next six months or until the election. We have 20,000 registered voters right now. We could not handle all 20,000 at one location. At this point, we have over 25% for the August election that are requesting and voting absentee. For November, as hard to believe as it is, that number is actually lower right now. When people signed up for their absentee ballots for April, I don't think they thought long-term. And they thought, I'll get an April and an August, and then in November, we'll vote in person. So I think that number will rise as we continue to see COVID numbers or weather or just anything. I don't think that the city, though, has one location that could accommodate a full presidential because we typically get around 90% voters for that election.
Hey, thank you.
And of course, on the mailing that just went out, it said that everything would be going back to the
Right, at this point, that is the plan.
But that's the plan, so.
And hopefully, we do get back to normal. But have every confidence in the clerk's office to have the election and make sure it's done properly, even if we don't get back to quite normal. So, okay.
Thank you, Krista.
No other questions? Motion, please.
Gail, move to adopt Resolution 12175-072120, an emergency resolution consolidating polling places due to COVID-19.
Mr. Kalskiel, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gail.
Aye.
Guzakowski.
Aye.
Lorick.
Aye.
Dukenyak.
Aye.
Item 16 is consideration of a motion to concur with the Celebrations Commission and designate Saturday, October 20, or 31st, 2020, from 4:00 to 7:00 p.m., see official Halloween trick-or-treat.
We're off the hook once this year.
On Saturday.
No one can complain this year, right?
Right. Yeah.[1730.85] So, any questions? Comments? And I believe that aligns with surrounding communities as well.
We have a leap year or do we get two good years out of this deal?
This was the leap.
You have no questions? Motion.
Gail will move to concur with the Celebrations Commission and designate Saturday, October 31, 2020, from 4:00 to 7:00 PM as the official City of Oak Creek trick-or-treat.
Zizakowsky, real second.
Roll call.
Alderman Guzakowski.
Hi.
Lorick.
Hi.
Dukneak.
Hi.
Gail.
Hi.
Item 17 concerns engineering and its consideration of a resolution approving the permanent public access easement with the Commerce 94 project at 9700 South 13th Street. We have Mike Simmons virtual with us. Evening, Mike.
Hello, Mayor and everybody else. Hopefully, you can hear me. I've got three items, two of which are related to Bartel Court, the new road in Ryan Business Park. So I'm going to attempt to share my screen and hopefully I am successful. So hopefully, you can see what I have on the screen. That is Bartel Court. That Didn't, didn't work. Not on there.
Now we got a good view of your kitchen, though.
Okay, let's see. Don't know why.
Mike hit share and then, and then you got to select the screen that you want to. I always forget that part. I just hit share and then think every, my mind is up on the screen or something, so.
Oh, I got you. Yep, yep, I see. Thank you, Andrew.
Got to kind of do it twice.
Got it. Okay. Do you see it now?
Yep. Thank you, Mike.
Okay, good. Okay, so Bartel Court, this is that, basically that cul-de-sac street that is, connects with the new intersection with State Drunk Highway 100, Ryan Road, of course. On the, on the graphic, to, to the right is actually north. So this is a north-south street and then it extends to the property which the Amazon plant resides. And so what we have is a public section of roadway and that's what you see in the shaded area. Basically extends from that new intersection to the, on the north to the creek crossing. And then you see kind of a, the cul-de-sac end of that roadway. And that is basically more of a roundabout. Its main function is to get the traffic into the parking lot of the Amazon. And there's also a driveway that goes off to the east that comes around the north side of that building. So again, the main, the, the, the main function of that cul-de-sac is to move employees and visitors to the Amazon plant. It has a secondary function and that is to provide a safe turnaround for public vehicles that may get down there and realize they're in the wrong location and they need to turn around and get, and then head back north. So that's why that is private and it's within, within a private, a permanent access. And so this item is basically approving that public access easement with the owner of the Amazon property that, which is Commerce 94 Project LLC. And the agreement basically outlines, you know, the responsibilities for operation, maintenance, reconstruction, snow clearing. So I, I kind of outlined in the report here, some of the main responsibilities that are outlined in the agreement, and that is the property owner, the grantor of the easement to maintain the cul-de-sac. And there's a, there's a median island in there that, that is landscape, that will be the property owner's responsibility to, to maintain that and to reconstruct the cul-de-sac as needed. So really, the city's responsibilities are, it will remove snow, it will, as it's removing from the public portion of Bartel Court, all-in-one operation, it will street sweep as it's sweeping Bartel Court. And then, you know, anything, anything that may happen to that cul-de-sac, to that private paving of that cul-de-sac within those two operations, it's not removal or street sweeping, you know, say a curb gets broke or something by, within those operations, then the city has to repair that. Pretty minor responsibilities as far as that goes. So the recommendation then is that, from staff, is that the, the council considers it and approves this agreement. If so, it can be signed and recorded with the Register of D.
Thank you, Mike. Any questions regarding Bartel Court?
Mike Alderman Dukneak, 3rd District, nothing to do with the next two points, but at the last meeting, there was discussion of the pocket park and the monument sign.
Yes.
Where, where in relation to this map is that thing going to be located?
The, the pocket park?
Yes. And then some type of monument sign, correct?
Right, right. So hopefully, are, hopefully you can see my cursor on the screen?
Yes.
Okay, so this is the area that will be the pocket park. Now, within that is my understanding, there will be a walking path and then a monument somewhere within here. I, I have not seen a detailed plan on that.
Parking spaces for visitors?
Right, yeah. And as the developer, you know, it's kind of tell the story of, of the property. And, you know, the railroad had crossed here. Now, of course, we know it's crossing to the, part of that monument is going to be some of the old abutment from the railroad crossing of the creek. And then also, as part of that other was, up in this area here, up towards the north on the east side of Bartel Court, that's where there will be some signage that is, you know, related to the tenants of the business park. So there'd be Amazon sign and then whatever else might develop some of, some of the properties up here.
Great, thank you, Mike.
Yep.
Anything else? Seeing none, motion?
Gail will move to approve Resolution 12168-072120, approving a permanent public access easement agreement with Commerce 94 Project LLC upon 9700 South 13th Street.
Zizakowsky, real second.
Roll call.
Alderman Lorick.
Hi.
Dukneak.
Hi.
Gail.
Hi.
Guzakowski.
Hi.
And item 18 is also about Bartel Court. It's for accepting the workmanship of the public improvements. Mike?
And so, yes, the, the road has been constructed. The, the public utilities within the, the right-of-way and adjacent to are constructed as well. There was a need to have the city accept the road as substantially complete, kind of a step process before then the right-of-way is actually transferred to, to the city. And that's going to happen here in the coming weeks with a, with another CSN that, that will be coming down the, the road as this, as the property develops. And basically, in a nutshell, the, the, the road is substantially complete. It was inspected by our representative and, and our in-house staff in some aspects as it was constructed. Same thing with the, this more tent through the water main that went, was inspected by utility staff. So there is agreement by all, all staff that it is an acceptable construction and we deem it substantially complete. And then we are just looking for basically a resolution from the council stating that that is the deed of fact.
Any questions, concerns? Seeing, seeing none. I don't hear anything from Greg. We'll ask for a motion on 18.
Gail moves to approve Resolution 12172-072120, accepting the workmanship of the Bartel Court public improvements.
Zizakowsky, real second.
Roll call.
Alderman Dukneak.
Hi.
Gail.
Hi.
Guzakowski.
Hi.
Lorick.
Hi.
And item 19, it's a proven, consideration of a resolution approving the state municipal agreement for the state-led STP local road project and rehabilitation of Drexel Avenue from 13th Street to Howell. Mike?
So engineering had applied for Surface Transportation Program grant funding, which is federal money administered through WISDOT. And we were informed in the spring that we, we were successful with that application. And basically, it is an 80% of grant funding, 20% City of Oak Creek funds that we would have towards the project. And what is, what was applied for and approved for a major rehabilitation of Drexel Avenue is basically a dollar bar retrofit and a diamond grind of the surface to improve the ride. We would also do, you know, some fairly extensive patching of, of concrete slabs. And we would do some street lighting upgrades and close some sidewalk gaps that they've talked about. Let's, let's get sidewalk more continuous along the north side. Of course, we are solid on the south side. And project was approved. So we would look at everything, if everything gets approved with this state municipal agreement, we would look at undertaking design, maybe getting going later this year, but primarily in 2021 and construction in 2022, possibly 23, but 22 would be preferable for sure.
Very good and great work on getting a grant, Mike.
And then on top of this, Andrew had alluded to it too. We talked about the, the wayfinding signs along this corridor. Of course, this is the main drag now in, in Oak Creek. And we, we were able to hear from the state that possibly some of this money, provided it's not spent on the construction entirely, could be used for, for some wayfinding signs. There are a lot of restrictions on what that sign is designed can be. And from what I've heard, I think that maybe that's, that's something that would, we would entirely be interested in. I think there's more of a branding with this wayfinding signage, but this, these are things that we can, that we, we will hash out definitely. So.
Mike, you just alluded to the Strategic Action Plan item, which I guess is now a current Strategic Action Plan item since it was approved, but we really need to do something spectacular to make Drexel Avenue a gateway to the city. I, I can't tell you all of the ideas that we could arrive at, but it has to be done well, has to be done aspirationally and over the top even. I'll even go that far. It has to be something that is very impactful to the traveling public, not only our residents, but those coming into the community don't know, there's a million ways we could take that. But what Mike is saying, above wayfinding signage, all of that fun stuff that we might want to do is not going to be covered by this grant. So we're going to have to figure out a way locally to fund those other aims and initiatives and impactful items that we want to, to see on that corridor. Fair, Mike?
Yes. Very well put, Andrew. You're right. You know, we, we got wayfinding signage on the 27th Street project when, when that project went and where there was so much time and effort put into that. And in the end, it's very unspectacular because of the restrictions that, that being a state road and, and with the state funding and the restrictions on what they, they will allow for signage. Drexel Avenue is a City of Oak Creek local road. So we can, we can design the signage that, that we want, state just won't put grant money towards it if it doesn't follow all of their restrictions.
Right. Any questions?
I just, Mike and Andrew, just to preach to the choir, if we design spectacular, we have to budget for maintenance and upkeep. So.
Just tell Ted that later on.
Well, yeah, if Ted could do something on the corner of 27th and Drexel with the blocks on the, on this, on the unspectacular wayfinding pedestrian thing that's there, they've been laying there for two years now and that's the kind of thing we need to avoid. We're going to put it in, we got to take care of it, so.
Yeah, I think Drexel will be a different game plan than 27th.
Well, you know, the corner's in Oak Creek and, you know.
I, I don't, I appreciate the comment, but I don't think we should shy away from certain things, just as long as we know what the full
Yeah.
What the, what the full
I don't mind good stuff. I mean, you got to take care of it.
We go in eyes wide open. That's the, that's the goal, right? So.
Okay. Nothing else? Motion on 19.
Lorick will move that the council adopt Resolution Number 12173-072120, approving the state municipal agreement for a state-led STP local road project, the rehabilitation of West Drexel Avenue from South 13th Street to South Howell Avenue.
Dukneak, second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gail.
Hi.
Guzakowski.
Hi.
Lorick.
Hi.
Dukneak.
Hi.
And item 20 is our License Committee. Would normally turn that over to Alderman Kirkowski, but I think
And Alderman Kirkowski, Mayor Dan, has asked me to present the common council report for the License Committee. That License Committee report lists 11 individuals that have applied and are asking for operator license approval. So are there any questions or concerns regarding the applicants and their license requests? Hey, seeing no objections, Dukneak moved to grant the various license requests as listed on the 7/21/20 License Committee report.
Second.
Roll call.
Alderman Guzakowski.
Hi.
Lorick.
Hi.
Dukneak.
Hi.
Gail.
Hi.
And item 21 is our vendor summary report. Everybody, please take a look and direct your questions to the appropriate person, either in the room or on video. And when you are satisfied, if there's no questions, motion.
Gail will move to approve the July 15, 2020, vendor summary report in the total amount of $381,854.38.
Zizakowsky, real second.
Roll call.
Alderman Lorick.
Hi.
Dukneak.
Hi.
Gail.
Hi.
Guzakowski.
Hi.
And item 2, 22 is consideration of a resolution authorizing payments of bills, debts, and obligations.
Thank you.
You want to explain that one there?
Sure. With the common council not meeting on August 4th, we are asking, as we have done in years past, that you allow us to continue to cut checks and release them as normal if there were a council meeting, and we will then present you with two vendor summary reports for the August 18th common council meeting.
Um, this is what we do pretty much every year when we skip council meeting.
Is that, Dan, because of national night out?
Yeah, I believe so. So again, this is just, business has to continue whether we meet or not, and we can't handcuff them in not paying bills and obligations, so. No further questions? Motion.
Gail moves to approve Resolution 12171-072120, authorizing payment of bills, debts, and obligations.
Zizakowsky, real second.
Roll call.
Alderman Dukneak.
Hi.
Gail.
Hi.
Guzakowski.
Hi.
Lorick.
Hi.
Okay, before we adjourn, just a couple of things. We did extend the pandemic. We talked about the COVID quite a bit. Shouldn't say we extended the pandemic, the emergency order declaring the pandemic. Again, please, as you're out in public, exercise good judgment. Do the best you can to help flatten that curve. We don't want it to continue and we want life to get back to as normal as possible. Thank you to the staff, the IT. We had quite a bit of participants and, and everything is working as normal, even in this virtual format. So we want to thank IT and, and of course, the staff from the strategic plan to the Health Department to Public Works, to the Clerk's Office. Everybody's been doing a really great job under really difficult circumstances. So thank you. And I just want to thank Alderman Lorick, who really made a huge effort to video in tonight to give us a, a quorum. So thanks, Greg. Thank you. Motion to adjourn.
I don't want to leave, but I Gail moves to adjourn.
Zizakowsky, real second.
Roll call.
Alderman Gail.
Hi.
Guzakowski.
Hi.
Lorick. Lorik.
Hi.
Dukneak.
Hi.
Night, everybody. Thank you.